Hey everybody, you are about to watch The Dr. Jamie Show. I hope you enjoy this episode. Good morning and welcome to The Dr. Jamie Show. I am so happy that you are joining me on this happy Friday. The best day of the week is Friday and The Dr. Jamie Show. You're one hour a week for yourself. We talk business, we talk success, we talk health, we talk just awesomeness. And that happens right here for the next hour of the show. So today we have an awesome show ahead of us. We have Akash Patel on the show. And what is he doing? He is a candidate for the Hillsborough County Commission District 1. Go support him, patel2018.com. And today we're going to talk about business. We're going to talk about tourism. We're going to talk about transportation. But it's The Dr. Jamie Show, so it's fun. It's not the boring kind. So we are, we're gonna have a great time. What are these man's challenges? What are his joys in life? And he had to rally for support, right? You're running for a position. You have to rally up for support. How did he do this? And how can we do this? Not necessarily if we're running for a city position, but in any time in life, right? How do you rally for that support? So you're going to find out some tips from the man himself here shortly. Okay, so on the show coming up. So next week we have an awesome show because it's my birthday and it's Friday and it's The Dr. Jamie Show and we're having Millionaire Hour. So these, we have three men coming on the show all with a net worth over 1.5 million. And, and the money was not inherited. How did they get it? How do they keep it? What are the tips and tricks? So Chris Denner will be on the show. Andreas Detlaff will be on the show. And Rufus Williams, who I can't wait for you to meet. He is an amazing man. He is so humble. And I just, you're going to learn so much from these three men and I can't wait for Rufus to join us as well. So I'm over the moon that he is. Okay, and then on the 8th, we have Erica Lopez, Dr. Erica Lopez on the show. She is a chiropractor. I'm hoping she's going to bring demonstrations. We're going to talk all things about the back, the bone, what we can do to have less bone pain in our back. We're going to talk about everything with alignments. What is scoliosis? You're going to learn all of it right here on the 8th. Then on the 15th, we're having Debbie Lane on the show. And she is a hypnosis expert. No, I will not be hypnotized. Yes, people want me to be. I am not going to do it. Akash doesn't know, but he's coming back to be hypnotized. Just kidding. My husband will be. So we'll find out all his deep dark secrets live right here on the show. There could be a possible divorce at the end of the show. Just kidding. Okay, on the 22nd, we have Karen Rowe on the show. And she is the number one international bestselling author and owner of Front Row Seat. What I love about her is she is a ghostwriter. So we are going to find out a little bit about what ghostwriting is. She has ghostwritten a book in three days or less for some major, major peeps. And we're going to find out who those people are. I don't know if we are, I don't know if she can tell us or not. But we're going to find out about the ghostwriting process. And is it considered cheating when you use a ghostwriter? I don't know. We're going to find out. Kind of feels a little bit like it to me. I don't know. So I need, I need to be more open minded and learn a little bit about that process. So she will bring that to us on the 22nd. Then on the 29th, we have Dr. Dawn McLaughlin on the show. And she is a food freedom coach. We're going to find out a lot about nutrition. We're going to find out a lot about eating disorders. That is a subject we haven't tapped into heavily on The Dr. Jamie Show. So we're going to go ahead and find out a little bit more about eating disorders and delve into that topic on the 29th of September. And then we're already in October. We're booked through October. I'll give you that rundown in a couple of weeks. We're starting to book into November. Akash has some amazing people that he might send my way. Then before you know it, we're booked through December. And Happy New Year! Oh my God. So yes, Christmas stuff is out everywhere already. Let's take a moment to grieve together. So I want to, I want to share a few tips with you. Then we'll finalize the rundown and then we'll bring out Akash, okay? So I wrote a short little article about different things that we can do in the morning to have a productive start. I've written these articles time and time again. Go on YouTube, Google search Jamie Culaga Morning Routine. You'll probably find, I don't know, 10, 20, 30 different tips that I've written about. But I'm going to share four of them with you today. Please take these into your week, next week, to start your mornings off right, your day off right. The first one is think positive. And this is the most important one that I want you to take into your day on Monday. One small positive thought in the morning will change your whole day. If you wake up on Monday morning and you are dreading the week ahead of you, you are going to have such a different week than the person's, than, than the person that wakes up and says, you know what? I got this week. I have five days of opportunity ahead of me. I'm going to crush it. I'm going to do awesome. I got this. I got my week planned out. I feel good. Oh, I hate Mondays. Where's my coffee? Can I call in? What time is it? Snooze, snooze, snooze. Who do you think is going to have a better week? There's a reason for that. It's all up here. And it starts from up here. Okay, so thinking positive. Eating breakfast. I get it. I get it. Okay, I heard you. You're not hungry in the morning. I understand. Neither am I. Oh, the other half of you, you're busy. You're trying to get the kids out. Ah, me too. Eat anyway. Find something, an on-the-go oatmeal, a banana, an apple. Just throw it in your car. Eat it on the way. It is very important that you start your morning with food. Why? Because it's going to keep your blood sugar in check. It's going to give you energy. And, and you increase the chances, work with me here, increase the chances of decreasing your calorie food intake and intake later on in the day. When we don't eat breakfast, we look at our watch. It's 1 o'clock. We're starving. We shove our face with everything in sight. That's pretty disgusting and gross to your body. So eat breakfast. Drink water, drink water in the morning. I know you want your caffeine. I know you do. I know you want your coffee. That's okay. I like my little buys. Sometimes I sneak a five hour. Don't tell the nutritionist that we're on the show. However, however, start with just a glass, a small glass of water. Wake up your organs, allow your joints to be lubricated, and then go ahead and have your coffee. What is it? A cup of water. You can slam that back in like 10 seconds. So just wake up your organs and be nice to them. You want them to be good too during the day? You need to be good to them. And my last one is grab some snacks. In the morning, grab snacks to take with you. You will get hungry. Eat frequently and periodically. When you starve yourself, we talked about the high calorie food intake, but you're also getting groggy. You're running low on energy. You're getting headaches. So now you're not clear minded. Now you're grumpy and fussy. And if you're the grumpy, fussy one in the office, nobody likes you. Just so you know. So grab some snacks because your day is going to get chaotic. Your day is going to be all over the place. You're going to be in the car. You're going to want to stop for fast food. Instead, have those healthy snacks with you and make a good choice. You know I like to do this. So those were my tips. A few last minute pieces of, a few last things I want to run down with you. Please go to iTunes. Please go to YouTube and subscribe to my channel. Every subscribe, every like, every follow truly helps. It helps grow the show and all of the content that I can offer you and the guests that I can have on the show. So, okay, I wanted to share something with you because so many people this week have said to me, "I love your necklace. I love your necklace, Jamie. It's so beautiful." So I said, you know what? I need to share this with everyone because I like to share this kind of information with you. And you might be thinking, that is a really pretty necklace. So we're talking small business today. I love to promote small business owners. And my mom introduced me to this amazing woman earlier this week. Came over, she brought me this beautiful necklace. And he said, you know what? I'm going to share this with people. I'm going to wear it. People started saying stuff. It was sitting out and someone commented on it and it wasn't even on me. So she is a small business owner. Please support her. I think if she's listening, she's a little scared to take the leap from the corporate world into full-blown entrepreneurship, small business owner. We all were there. So, you know, please give her the support. She doesn't have a website yet, okay? So let me tell you a little bit about the necklace and where you can go to support her. She doesn't have a website. So if you like this, you want to see some other samples of jewelry she has, email her at loveofmolly@yahoo.com. Love, L-O-V-E-O-F-M-A-L-I at yahoo.com. She gets her jewelry made in Indonesia and then she has a certificate to be able to sell it over here in the U.S. And it's affordable. And when I say affordable, I'm not talking about like affordable. Like some people are like, it's so affordable. It's only $200. $200 for a necklace is not affordable. So whoever says that, you are not affordable. This is affordable, between 20 and 60 bucks for these pieces. They're more at the local store in our mall. So please do me a favor and support her. I don't get anything off of this. I'm not trying to. I just genuinely think this beautiful woman could, needs to be pushed off the ledge and build her wings on the way down. And you can start supporting her now at loveofmolly@yahoo.com. Just, just email her and say, hey, can I see some pictures? And we'll start her there. And together we can watch her business grow, be a part of her journey. That is all that I have for you today. I know what you're here for. You're not here for this. You're here for this man, Akash Patel. Come on down.
How you doing?
God, I still need music. I need some kind of like dance music. Yeah, nice to see you. Thanks for coming back. Yeah, so if you are new to The Dr. Jamie Show, Akash was here before talking about networking. His company Elevate gave us tips on networking, especially when we're scared or we don't want to say anything. But we have a little bit different angle for you today. You are running for Hillsborough County District 1.
Hillsborough County Commission, yes ma'am.
Wow, wow. Okay, so we are going to find out all about what this means. But, but we have to know something unique, weird, or bizarre about you that nobody knows or very few people. And it has to be different from the last show.
I hate socks.
You hate socks?
So I try to go barefoot normally during, during the day with my shoes, regardless of what the shoes are. So today I wore socks for you.
I love it, thank you.
I didn't want the viewers to think I was just going barefoot.
I love it. I love it. So should I take my shoes off? Or like, I feel like Wes, I mean like, you don't like, you don't like socks.
No.
And I love socks.
We should just take off. I'm putting on my socks.
We'll break the internet if you take your socks off and I put your socks on. Yeah, so my weird thing for the new people here. Whenever I go to bed at night, I have to wear tall soccer socks to bed. Yeah, so every night, every night. I don't know what it does, but I, I love it. So, okay, all right. Now we're going to turn to a quote on the board. I'm going to read it to you guys. And then you tell me if you agree with it, if you disagree with it and why, okay?
Got it.
"I'm a big fan of small business ownership. I think it's the backbone of American innovation. But to be successful, you first have to have the courage to go for it." True or false? Agree or disagree?
It's true.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that you have to have confidence. And when you have your business, you have to be confident in what you're doing, whatever your product is. And you have to have the backbone to make sure that if someone challenges you, you know how to, to adhere to the situation. And so entrepreneurship is leadership. And, and my family, that's, that's our story. And that's the mental beginning of my story. So I definitely agree with this. This is the gentleman on the, 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 the apprentice, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so, was it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I remember him.
Yeah. And I, I have to agree with it as well because, and, and almost from a little bit of a different angle, like you have to, like we were just talking about the girl with the necklace, right? She's in the corporate world. Maybe she believes in our product. Maybe she loves her product. But it's scary. It's scary to take that jump and fully invest into this one thing. You really have to be brave. Even as a small business owner, I have more opportunities that come my way. And sometimes I don't know if I have the courage to take that jump. I've done it before, but then you go back to that ground and you're like, ah, can I do it? It takes bravery.
And most successful people out there fail.
Yes.
They fail first and they go.
Yes.
You know, Michael Jordan was cut from his ninth grade basketball team.
That's crazy. Yep, you out there, that coach out there is still kicking himself in the bottom. Yeah, and Thomas Edison said, "I failed my way to success." So I love that one. Wes, can you do me a favor and click that on the screen on my phone for me real quick? Thanks. Okay, all right. So we're going to go ahead and we are going to jump into some questions today, right away? You ready? All right, okay. So I know you've been on the show before. But can you, and we've heard your journey to Elevate, what you did, how you got going. But now tell us about a different journey. Tell us about the journey from Elevate and not necessarily switching, but adding on this District 1 role. Let's, tell us, how, why did you decide to run?
Well, you know, in my business, we work with companies that relocate their headquarters and entrepreneurs.
Okay.
And every day when we listen to them, we strategize with who they need to meet, what they need to get involved with. And a lot of times it's, it's different things that involve our local government. See, local government is different than our federal and our, our state government. It's done right here. So if a local county commissioner wants to pass ordinance for a speed bump, it's done in two weeks. And that's how we-
I don't want speed bumps. Can we add that? We're going to add that right now, everybody.
But using example, it's done, it's done really much more quickly and much more personally. So in just recent years, a lot of my clients have said, hey, you know what? Has there been some change in the county commission? Has there been some change in city council? And, and the truth is a lot of the same folks that are in office stay in office because we have, there's no real rule for preventing people to switch seats.
Okay.
And there's nothing, you know, that's, that's, it's a law. So they're not breaking the laws. So it's very rare to find an open seat, right? Always someone that has name, strong name identification. So for me, I was doing my normal business. I was taking clients to a breakfast in, in April for the Glazer Children's Museum.
Going over all the speed bumps in Tampa.
That's right. And the parking was a problem as usual. And one of our county commissioners, who's a friend and I served with her on the board of the Early Learning Coalition, I'm the chair, our chair. She had made a comment that she might be leaving the seat that she's in now, which is the seat that I live in, the district. She referred her county wide district seat. And I thought to myself, I said, when in my life am I going to be in my, my town? Which is this town, which is Tampa, is an amazing community for not hearing you need to move here.
Yeah.
Where are those, I mean, open seat where I live. So I don't have to move to find the open seat. I live, so I live right here. And I'm young, I have no kids yet. I have no family yet. I have a girlfriend and I talked to her about it. I talked to my clients about it. I talked to my family about it. And they said, if this is what you want, go for it. There's nothing stopping you right now.
Right.
So that was in April, end of April. And then I thought about it a little bit in May and I couldn't, you know, you do that list. What's going to work out? What's not going to work out? What's the best, worst case scenario? And I had literally 10 days to decide because there's so much things you have to prep beforehand. Who's going to be your manager? You got to interview managers. Who's going to be your CPA? What's your statement? What's your platform? Who's going to design your website? Are you going to do a photo shoot?
And now when you're a small business owner, not running for the city, you're, you are all of that. You are, you're like, who I got to hire for CPA? Me! Who am I going to hire as an attorney? Me!
Exactly. Unfortunately, running for office, you can't, you have to find other people.
Okay.
And the other part is, how are you going to raise money? How are you going to raise money and live your normal lifestyle? And how are you going to still work? Because you have to now spend time raising money. So I spent a lot of that time just thinking about it in May. And then finally, June 2nd, I went to the bowl, the supervised elections office and I just, where people vote, where the polls are. And on the 18th floor, the county commission and I, County Center, sorry. And I just filed my paperwork. And that was on a Friday. On a Saturday, the media picked it up and it was in the paper on Saturday and Monday.
Ah, yay!
So I'm really lucky that, that during that timeframe, no one really said, you know, don't do it. They said, you have the challenge you're going to face.
Yeah.
But I said, okay, so what? Tell me why. Give me an answer why. And I'll do it.
I love that. So nobody, so let me get this clear. Nobody told you to not do it? Did I hear that correct?
Yeah, they told me it's going to be difficult.
Yep.
And they're, they're going to be, these are the obstacles. But they said, if this is your dream, follow your dream.
Okay, so what I want you to hear from him is that he was stepping off going for a new goal. But this man has had, he runs a business, Elevate, already. When you own a business, when you're stepping off and, and going for goals, you need to make sure the toxic people are far gone from you because they will plant seeds of doubt in your mind. They will talk bullshit. They will make you back down. So he already had a network of people around him that were not toxic. So now he's ready to take the next step in his career. And everyone around him tells him to go for it. Now they're realistic. Hey, it's going to be hard. It's going to be challenging. But anything you do, any goal you go for better be challenging and harder. It's really not a goal. So he had people that were realistic around him, but not toxic. So I want you to keep that in mind when you go to step foot off to a new goal. So excellent. So you were surrounded by some awesome people that said, go do it. Now you go to the 18th floor. You drop this thing off.
It's basically signing my life away.
You're signing your life away. And the first born you don't have yet.
Right.
And how did you feel like when you're like, okay, this is happening? Did you get a feeling or anything?
I was nervous because I knew from then on out and it's actually, everything you do is public. I mean, literally, every, every time I make a mistake, it's going to be, I mean, and so I, you know, I always thought that was, was going to happen. But then I realized that I need to start setting up events and setting up donations and getting things going. And so I spent basically the first month of June just doing online donations and Facebook messaging and getting my platform together. And then at the end of July, I had one big kickoff event at the Western Hotel here in Marketville.
Yes.
And that, we did really well. We raised $50,000. I had with 250 people. So it was really, really-
You didn't say 5,000.
50,000.
You didn't say 15.
Nope.
Five zero?
Yeah, on one night.
Wow!
That was, that was really, was one of a really, really good, successful night. So online, my first month was 31,000. My second month was 63,000 with, with the event included in that. And then this is my third month. And so my big goal is, is, is to get to 500,000 for this entire race.
Wow!
And so to each month, I have goals and deadlines with events and organizers and committees. And so that's where I spend most of my day. And I still have to work.
Yeah.
So it's like a 24/7 job.
Yeah. And if people do want to support along, while we're talking, they can go to patel2018.com?
Exactly. There's a donate button, there's an events button, there's a platform. But whatever you want to learn about the campaign, people are tweeting me every day. They're emailing me. We'd love to get your feedback on what we can help you with.
Okay, excellent. And even if you just go and donate a dollar, it's something. Like if everyone donates a dollar, everyone donates two bucks, go there and do something. So, okay, honestly, I'm, yay, I'm so excited for you. Okay, so you put the ballot in. You know all your mistakes are going to be highlighted in the media because that's what we love to do. And, okay, all right, very good. So I want to, I want to continue on and get to some hard questions to make sure that we have enough time for everything. So you are running for Hillsborough County Commission District 1. What is District 1?
District, so Hillsborough County has seven county commissioners. There's about a $5 billion budget of the county commission overseas. And there are, there are at-large seats and there's district seats. The at-large seats cover the entire county, which is 1.3 million people. And this District 1 covers about 215,000 people. It covers from West Chase to West Tampa, to South Tampa, to Davis Island, to Riverview, to Apollo Beach, to Ruskin.
Wow.
So the district is a sliver of, along the water. But everything around McTeer Air Force Base, everything around Tampa International Airport, those are the folks that can vote for me. I'm running in a Republican primary. So my election is August 28th, 2018. There is no other Republican opponent right now. There is one person on the Democratic side that has files. Her name is Yoli Kapine. She's a councilwoman chair. And so I, I am unsure of who is going to challenge me. I do anticipate having a challenger. So every day I have to work tech times hard because I know that the challenger is going to be, you know, pushing my limits. So I'm just trying to get out there and get out of floods.
Nice, excellent. Okay, all right, very good. So, okay, so you have this sliver of this like waterfront of the people that can vote for you. You have the waterfront property.
You can vote for, you live in my district.
Nice, nice, so you have waterfront property, vote for this man, okay, alright, excellent, okay, so a little about District One. So what is your role exactly in the seat, what would it be, what are you doing?
So it's a full-time job, you can have a second job on the side, um but you county, the county government basically oversees a lot of departments and manages our budget. So you think about parks and recreation, you think about pet services, social services, uh the fire department, things like. You know, our transport, our trans, they work with our transportation system, they work with our ports, our airports, but permitting, land zone usage. And also economic development, those are the issues that are really the county commission focus on, there are a lot of hearings on land zone, uh land uh usage. So if you're one of buy building with the permitting process, you gotta go through construction, you gotta go through the the county government. Because they wanna make sure that if we're uh planning strategically, we're using our tax laws wisely.
Okay.
Um tourism is a big issue and the bed tax is part of the county. So the first fiscal year budget that I can even vote on will be at the twenty twenty budget. In October of eighteen, they're gonna vote on the nineteen, two thousand nineteen budget. Hope the if I make it, the election will be November eighteen.
When you make it or?
When when I make it, when I make it.
That's the coach and me coming out.
It'll be, so then I'll, so we'll be planning ahead for the future, so we, the county commissioner's plans I had on how do we maintain a positive community? How do we use our dollars wisely and how do we make sure that our residents are happy?
Okay, so I heard the word permitting in there, so your District One is part of helping with permitting?
The entire county commission helps with permitting, yeah.
All my clients and friends out there permitting right here, okay, Patel twenty eight dot com. You got it, all I hear from clients, all I hear from friends in business, issues with um. Yeah, yeah, issues with permits all the time and how long it takes, so. You got it busy, that's gonna be your job uh alone.
Well, part of this is finding other ways to be innovative, right, so as a county commissioner, how, you know, what can we do to make processes innovative? Online, mobile applications, is that possible, is it feasible, we don't know, uh I'm sure they do know, we just need to need to make decisions on it.
Yep, okay, alright, very good, okay, so um and the people that are chiming in with some questions, we are gonna get to them, don't worry, Tom, we're gonna get to your questions. Um, okay, so uh you have to be really head over heels passionate about a city to run for something like this. Tell us a little bit about your passion for the city, why are you so passionate about it?
I love this region, I love the people here, I love the fact that we have our military communities, one of our largest employers, I love I love the fact that we live where people vacation. It also is really an open city, I tell people all the time that I that work with me, that you can live anywhere, but it's hard to get to know people cuz sometimes they're just like, the community is very. Old school in their mentality, where Tampa is an open community, you can move here, you can get involved, you can can make a difference real fast. And you're seeing that with people like uh sports teams and people like uh, you know, business owners that have come here and opened really a lot of businesses. So for me, if I wanna live here and I wanna create a lifestyle here and have a family here, I wanna create a government that I wanna be part of, I wanna be proud of my government. So how do you create a government you're proud of, you have to serve. And so everyone, when I announce, they're like, oh, you really want the the big budget, that's where you're running, you're gonna get six figures, I'm like, well, the salary is ninety five thousand a year for a county commissioner. That's a pay cut for me, you don't do public service for the for the dollars, you do it for the love of the community and. The way I look at it is, we need some younger, frankly, diverse generations to take over. It's the great community, but it's time for another new leader, generation of leadership uh to 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 be be in charge, and so. You start small and you you know you work your way up, but for me, I've served on the citizens advisory board with Hillsborough County Commission. And the governor probably made sure the early learning coalition uh three years ago, so I've had some experience and now I'm ready, I think I'm ready to take.
Very good, so um very passionate man, and I don't even think you really need to explain it because you've shown it. You've you've shown it, you don't ha, I mean, with Elevate and getting so many other businesses immersed into the community. And getting them excited and passionate about Tampa, that's what you've done for years, so I love it, I'm I'm so proud of you.
I appreciate it, thanks a lot.
Okay, and and alright, so next question, okay, so is a little bit about rallying.
First online, I found our organization, and he won a fifty thousand dollar grant, twenty five thousand for his college, and twenty nine thousand dollars for the early learning coalition.
Wow.
But I look at people like Drew and I and I'm talking to, you know, he's he's you know, a lot younger than me and lots smarter. And and to face all that adversity in high school, to go through and find this passion and have seven hundred and fifty community service hours, so. To answer your question, if you're a community, if you're a high school student in this community. And you're trying to run for council and you're not getting the support, you need to stay positive, so that's kind of the motivation line, what Drew was telling me, and and motivation of almost people is that. They have a passion, they go for something, and people tear them down, they keep saying negative things, they keep picking at it.
The toxic people.
The toxic people, and they let it get to them, so you can't let it get to you, you have to be determined, and you have to stay positive, and so for me. Yeah, I've gotten some great support, but not a lot, I've had a lot of people when I've called, since I've raised that money, since that event came to happen. And they said, well, we don't know, we think someone else is gonna get involved, we think uh it's too early to support somebody, every reason that you don't wanna hear.
Yeah.
That just, you're just so frustrated when you hear that, just stay calm, I realize that, you know what? They're gonna regret it, and you just go back to doing your thing, there's always someone else that you can.
Yep, absolutely, or maybe they need time, they need time and they'll come around, but but I think what we need to take from here is that. There are gonna be people around you that tell you it's not a good time, um or you're not ready, or. I don't know, a million excuses that people around us can give to us. If you truly believe this is what you wanna do, if it's a dream of yours, if it's a goal of yours, go for it anyway, I've said that to you time and time again. So many people along my journey, even the best people, the people with my best interest in mind. Would say, don't do it, or you can't handle it right now, Jamie, slow down, um but I knew, because I'm living in it. What was best for me or for my family, um and then, and I don't, I didn't burn bridges along the way, I I tried not to say. Get mad at them and scream at them, I respect your opinion, but I have to keep on my journey.
And write and write your goals down, and I think you share your goals with someone you really trust and love, um that's what I've been trying to do, so when you know what you want. And you write it down and you help have someone to balance it off, find an accountability partner, whether it's your friend or your spouse or or your your child. Make sure you're talking to someone to buy your goal.
I love that, okay, so having some type of accountability partner, research has shown this works, uh don't test, don't test the research, just do it. Um have that accountability partner, the more you get people involved, the more you tell them, I'm doing this, I'm doing this, now you have to do it cuz you're telling people you're doing it. Uh so you need to come through, that's the accountability part, alright, okay, very good. Um, okay, so I put uh even when we get support uh and we're feeling empowered. It doesn't necessarily mean that these types of leaps aren't scary, what has been a challenge for you along your journey so far in running? And have you had any fears, so we kinda talked about it, but tell us a little bit about the challenges and fears you've had and how you've overcome them.
The fears are really what's going on in our world today in politics and all the riots and nasty things that are said to people of of different colors. Unfortunately, on our Facebook page, uh Patel twenty eighteen dot com, we have our 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 Facebook page for our campaign. We've seen negative comments about my race, and so if people are commenting, and so we, you know, obviously you're upset because you don't want those kind of things in this day and age. It's two thousand seventeen, um you will know what's gonna happen when we go knock on doors, because part of this is actually going to meet the voters, and so I'm gonna be knocking on doors. Uh for a long time, eighteen thousand doors, I'm gonna start knocking on from January on, is that's the district of about numbers of Republicans. That I need to knock on doors of, and I know their addresses, I know their names, and I don't know what reaction I'm going to get, and that's just because it's new. It's new for them, it's new for me, and so the fear is, how do you maintain a positive face when you're looking in the eye to eye, when you're on the internet, it's different. And when you're, when you've got a lot of money on you, it's different, it's, this is right in my face, and this is someone I don't know, and it's someone I need to have their support. So it's a challenge, but the way to overcome it is to stay grounded, do what you do best, and and make sure you're on message with your platform and. And have an open dialogue and be open minded, like you said, don't burn bridges, that is one of the things that. People in in politics will tell you, you burn bridges, you're in trouble, because they're never gonna leave.
Okay, yeah, and I and I and I do think that face to face is hard to swallow, and you know, the coach and me would tell you, you know, to. Just hold tight when you go door to door, cuz it is, it's so scary and um I I remember I did, I was on Bay News Nine, it must have been. You might remember this, Wes, oh, that's awesome, that's my phone, um so, didn't turn it on silent. Uh but I remember it was probably my first or second time um on Bay News Nine. And a guy wrote in on Bay News Nine or under somehow, and it ended up ranking on Google, what, is she bashing America, does she hate America? I don't think I've ever even done a segment on like America, let alone, but I'm this little white girl, I'm not bashing America, I'm for America.
You're American.
And but he was like, she has no idea, she's bashing America, and I'm like. And it, but for some reason, I let it eat at me, and that somehow, maybe cuz it's tied to like the SEO with Bay News Nine. Was like ranked, so when you would type Jamie Kulag, it was like the third one down his review. And it ate me alive, and I I started writing, I was crying actually, and I started, cuz I and I wrote, was writing him back. Sir, I I wanted to say like, I I apologize if I offended you, what did I say that bothered you, and I said, stop, stop. I looked at his Facebook profile and it's all like. America like bashing on the wrong, just mean stuff, and I said, I don't need to entail. My time and my energy on this man that goes around deliberately. Doing negative things to people every day, like I looked at his profile and that's what he's doing, so I stopped, I got a grip and I said. There are how many thousands of people that, you should think this too when you go door to door.
Oh, yeah.
There are how many thousands of people that are supporting you, that love you and believe in you, you're gonna let this one man ruin it? For all the thousands of people that are supporting you, um and I said, no, I'm not letting him get the best of me, so I want you to think of that as well. When you're going for a goal, you might have one or two haters uh along the way, but don't let that ruin it for all the people that love you. Uh and ruin it for your dream altogether, so.
And when I was a student government in in Florida State University, go Knowles. We have, we have, we have a saying too, I mean, if you're not doing, you're not doing something right and people are upset.
Yeah.
I mean, people are going to be upset no matter what you, doesn't matter what you say, they're gonna be upset, so you have, so you were, you were, you were on message.
Yep, you can be disruptive, you don't have to be mean, but you can be disruptive, um alright, very good. Okay, so um, okay, so we were just talking a little bit about the fears and challenges that you face. Um and I'm a business owner, so I'm on this roller.
Successful business owner.
Successful business owner.
Future woman of the year, hands, hands.
One day, one day closed, it is on my bucket list, by the way, so I need your support uh for that, so um. Okay, so uh you've ran your own business, tell us a little bit about the challenges that you faced. Uh in your own business specifically, like with Elevate, cuz we wanna know that you can relate to us as a small business owner.
Well, I mean, you said earlier on, I mean, when you start a business, you're the chief janitor, you're the chief information officer, you're the chief, you know, you're the you're the chief administrator. It is hard to do everything in time management, so for me, the hardest thing is time management. How much can I get done in a limited amount of time I have, like I said, sleep is overrated, that's why I tell people, you just, you gotta work through your sleep, but. The other challenge is obviously making sure your employees are happy, you have employees that have kids, and you have employees that are in school, and he, cuz I have all different, I have interns and I have mothers and I have. Uh fathers, and so it is really tough to make sure that everyone gels, and everyone has the culture that believes within what you're doing. And the good part is, we have a very friendly, open culture, very, very fun environment, but we also have to get business done, cuz we do get paid for a living to make deals happen. And so um one of my challenges has been retention, I mean, employees uh you know, have, get recruited away. Cuz they're they're young and they're smart, and then their other offers will come, so how do you deal with that, then the other part of it is, is how do you maintain. A certain level of professionalism while you wanna enjoy your your work, cuz when you're socializing with your clients at events and they. You know, they can, you're texting them, I mean, so.
Yeah, there's a line.
At eight o'clock at night, do they have a question, they can call you, but it's after hours, is that okay, do I call my employee up? There's a lot of different lines, and so setting boundaries and guidelines, every time we go uh to an event, we set mountain, boundaries, guidelines and goals. Okay, these are how many people wanna meet, this is how many drinks you're allowed to have, this is how many people you can.
So true, it's so true.
You don't know who's watching you, and you're judged as your business owner on the people you're serving.
So true, Wes knows this about me, any networking event I go to, never will drink, I will not drink, I'm not, no way. Uh but yeah, so you do, so setting boundaries for sure, retention, I think that's huge for small business owners, so.
And goals, deadlines and expectations, so I tell my employees, every Friday, you have to turn this in by five o'clock, obviously a timesheet, we need to know how many hours you're on, right? Don't be late, if I can't pay you for that, I don't know what your timesheet is.
Wes is not even in the background, I think we all face these issues, okay, so we know he's he's not a fake, it's true, he runs his own small business. Cuz he just hit on every problem we all face, okay, alright, good, um okay, so let's see, let's see, okay. How can government, we're gonna switch gears and we're gonna talk um economics and tourism and stuff, just give me one second, but I do wanna ask this. How can government better support our small business, because small businesses, I mean, we're generating, I mean, a lot of jobs.
Oh, yeah.
Right, we're, and you know what, sometimes I stop and it feels good, sometimes it's scary as hell. Um but at the same time, it feels really good that I get to employ people and grow and be part of the the Tampa growth. Um but how can government even really help me as a small business owner?
I think there's two ways, we have the TAMPA, Hillsborough Economic Development Corporation, where I'm an investor, they have great research grants for small businesses. You have the small business uh uh small business division here by USF, even S, you have SBA chapter in downtown, Ed Channel Side Area. They offer research and grants and application processes to help you, uh that's one way, the other part, the other part of it is, is just um training. Right, there are grants for training, and you can apply as a small business owner, if you're female owned, if you're a military owned business. And so for government, we need to make it more accessible for the resources that we offer, right, so we're offering a small business training center. On social media, let's say the government is, well, we need to make sure it's virtual, and you get the webinar and you and you're registered, you qualify. So Career Source is a great organization, Career Source Tampa Bay, I speak there on occasion, Tampa where I live, so you leave the five, you won't get there till like eight o'clock. Just because it's bumper to bumper, because the the way, it's, you're not going too far, but the way we are, we don't only live one way in and out of that area, so. What can we do as a county commissioner, we can look at expanding roads, right? We can look at having dedicated bus lanes, dedicated uh carpool lanes, which they do in California, and it works well. Um, we can, we can, we have the authority to tax as a county commissioner, uh in the past, it hasn't hasn't passed. But we could tax and we could uh take that tax money and maybe try to fund a rail project. Right now, I don't know what the right answer is, I do need, do know we need a solution. And so there's a study that's being done right now by a project called Tampa Next, and uh those folks have proposed difference, you know, difference of building a highway. Expanding these roads on the highway, but for us as citizens who drive to work and drive to the mall and drive your kids to school. We have to be most effective and efficient, so I'm looking for ideas, but for transportation right now, my platform is simple. We can at least fix something small like parking lane vehicles or dedicated bus lanes, and we need to make a better public transit system. If you know um, most people that live in big cities have a public transit system that's effective. Our bus system is great, hard, they do a great job, but I don't know how many people take it, because it's not on the way to their route. So we we need to change the routes, and again, that's all the studies that are being done right now, they're a lot more smarter than people than than me that are looking into it. But as a commissioner, one of the items I'll bring to the table is a unique way to not only look at the solution. But express the views and talk to the 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 community, because there was a vote in two thousand and ten called Moving Hills Forward. And it was for a rail uh movement, and it was for a tax increase, it did not pass. But a lot of the reasons, there's a lot of reasons it didn't pass, but one of the reasons was just that the messaging was really off, and people didn't know what exactly the routes were. If it were to pass, and when it was gonna be done, and the expectations, and so one of my goals as transportation is to look at all the options.
Okay.
And make sure we think of an innovative creative solution for the future, but most importantly, instantly, we can fix at least the lanes that we already have created, that's. That doesn't take much money or time.
Yeah, and and what I love is being innovative, and I think we talked before the show about how like it's a whole new generation of technology and innovation and. Really, what I teach my students about being fluent and thinking outside of the box, and I think that's what it's gonna take to fix some of these roads. I also take West Shore every day, so if you could fix West Shore, that would be great.
I was discussing about putting a, you know, just a high-speed rail just for your house to West Shore.
You know what, I vote you.
Okay, that's done, that was easy, I'm done, guys, thanks again.
There'll be an increased tax uh but tomorrow, by the way. Um, okay, so education, let's talk about education, so we have uh transportation, education is another issue, okay, I know education is important. It's, everybody knows that, but does education specifically play a role in economic development?
Absolutely.
Okay, why?
So number one, I'm my biggest, I'm big for one of the early learning education, but if you think about where we are as a community. If you're going to relocate a corporate headquarters here, that means a CEO or team members or young professionals are gonna move here. And they're gonna eventually become parents and have children, or they're already moving their children, they're not gonna move here if their school district is not top class.
Yeah.
That is just a fundamental uh statement, because we wanna live in a community that they can get a great education and they can be. And it's affordable, and they can also have a good lifestyle, and so Tampa has a lot of those options, but my opinion, being the chair. Of the early learning edu- education coalition, early learning coalition Hillsborough County, sorry, the last three years, is that we need to focus on promoting early learning. Right, and that means the business community, that means the the other education community, we need to talk about having the early learning conversation. In the year twenty thirty, Jamie, half of the professions in Florida currently are not gonna exist.
Wow.
Because there's new things coming about, so what are your children gonna do, where, so we, are they gonna, we have a read?
They'll be cleaning, just in case you want to know.
But then there's also a mil, there's also a military thing, we're we're a military base here, right, so I'm an honorary commander at McDelela Force Base. The sixth air mobility wing, thank you to all the men and women who serve our country every day.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you, but what the studies have shown, that if you're not able to read at an early age. You're not as likely to graduate from college, or from high school, excuse me, from high school, if you don't graduate from high school, you're more likely to get involved in terrible situations.
Yeah.
Those terrible situations lead to conflict and crime, then.
Impacts your adulthood.
Impacts your adulthood, and then what you have is a lesser pool for our military to recruit. So now we're looking at a national security issue if you don't invest in early learning. You're looking at a crime issue which the state has told us, that if they don't pass a certain grade level reading, they're most likely to be committing crimes, so you're looking at. Now jails, you're looking at our military, and of course, you're looking at our workforce. So for me, this is, we need to spend more of our time and invest in, and so I've got an idea. On how we can fix our early learning education system, just not completely, but to to improve it, and so I'm I'm releasing that soon. But right now I have some statements on my website, but you'll see an update from me in the next month.
Excellent, so if people wanna see those statements, they can go Patel twenty eighteen.
You got it.
Patel twenty eighteen to find out some of those statements, excellent, excellent, okay. So now we're going to talk about some awesome, awesome things, and, oh, you know what, actually, I take that back, I wanna talk about tourism.
Okay.
Okay, cuz that's gonna be part of the three I wanted to talk about, okay, so when I think about tourism, I do think about Florida, but I think about Disney. And so I'm thinking about our next door neighbor, which way, which way is it, Wes?
Mickey Mouse.
That way, Mickey Mouse, Disney, that way, that way, um so does Hillsborough County have tourism, tell us a little bit about it.
We do, just the other day, I met with the folks at Bush Gardens, if you've never been to Bush Gardens, amazing facility.
It is great.
Amazing park, new new coasters all the time, but one hundred and twenty million visitors visit Florida every year.
Wow.
Approximately, it's like been one hundred and six last year. With that, what that means is that we are a tourism state, and all the hotels and conventions that we get. That bed tax dollars, the tax dollars that they're paying when they're staying in these hotels, go to go to our taxpayer, it goes back to our community, goes over to our commission. And it goes to promote our community, and they, when they come here, they, by the way, they rent our cars here, they eat in our restaurants. They go to our our sports teams, they go to our sporting nights, they go to our concerts.
They use our small businesses.
They use our small businesses, especially in the in the in the whatever is convenient for them as far as groceries and whatnot, so. We need to make sure that the folks that are in our tourism industry are happy, so we have to communicate how we can promote more events to get. More people to come here, so what does that mean, our college football national championship uh game that was in January, I was on that hosting committee. We're gonna get a super here in twenty twenty.
I know.
It's exciting, we have four different collegiate professional sporting events, we have the women's final four coming, we got the men's uh second round coming. Those are the events we need to continue, so how do we as a as a small business owner, owner, support tourism, we have to tell the world about Tampa. We have to use hashtag Tampa has swagger, that's my thing.
Hashtag Tampa has swagger, I love it, we do have swagger.
Yeah. And and again, people aren't gonna come visit, it's a place they've never heard of, I mean, when's the last time you went on vacation, a place you didn't know much about.
Right.
So, and me as a county commissioner, you know, if, when I'm elected, I think we need to really focus on listening to our. Tourism partners and saying, what more do you need from us?
Okay.
As community leaders, what more can we do to broadcast, is it tweeting about you, is it posting a video, is it, you know, marketing a certain community? You know, sometimes here in New York, you see commercials for Disney, like, wow, that's smart, now there's so many people with Disney.
That, yep, that's why they do it, bring them over there, I love it, you know, I have to connect you with someone, remind me before we close, this is how business happens right here. Um and because I think all those articles that are like Tampa's number one for starting entrepreneurial X Y Z.
Friendly is walkable city.
Friendly is walkable city, that that is nationwide news at times, so um I love that, and.
Forbes, by the way, just named us one of the most best cities of sort of uh startup companies.
Yes, yes, ah so, ah Melinda, creating these necklaces, but you are in the best place to start your own business, according to Forbes. And you know they're always right, I like them, um okay, alright, so now it's time to uh make all of the viewers that don't live in Tampa jealous. Okay, um so we have awesome, awesome growth here, what are three amazing things that you see happening right now in Hillsborough? Think I gotta make them jealous when you're answering this.
Well, three amazing things that are going on is our downtown, number one is our downtown. If you were to come to our downtown five, six years ago, it would have been empty on a Saturday night, now you've got bars, now you've got restaurants, and now you have. A vibrant housing uh community where people are building, living in in condo towers, they're living in high rises, they're living in apartments. And we also have a medical school that's coming to surround that, that's the USF Medical School.
Wow, that's great.
Which, by the way, is one of the number, had one of the most successful, uh they had the most applicants than any other med school in the state last year, so it's going to be. Uh one of the most thriving things in our community, by the way, we have a Riverwalk, so now you can walk from one end of downtown to the next. Curtis Sixon Park has a lot of events to get the community out there, they're gonna build uh uh another Four Green Fields, they're coming up soon. So uh for me, the number one thing in the future of Tampa is our downtown, we are leveraging it, we are using it. And we're making sure that young people, when they move here, they get a a fair option to live there.
Okay.
Number two, we have a phenomenal uh phenomenal sports community. And if you haven't heard, when I say Tampa Bay, I think about Hillsborough, Pinellas, and even Sarasota. In Pinellas County, downtown St. Petersburg, the Tampa Rowdies are looking to be a major league soccer team. So what happened in Orlando, where they were the N A S L, and they went over to the the MLS, my uh MLS. And Orlando City now plays in an amazing stadium, has amazing players, while the Tampa Rowdies are right there, there's already uh uh MLS is already gonna move one of their offices here. They are going to move some of their uh their their uh, they've already voted in St. Pete to have a referendum, now they're just voting to see if we are gonna get awarded the MLS team. So there's four cities in contention.
Where do we find out?
I believe in the next year.
Wow.
Um but we made it pass what we needed to pass, and Bill Edwards in St. Pete, who's been spearheading this efforts, and the Edwards Group, and Ron with the St. Pete Chamber did an amazing job. So I think in our, in the future of Hillsborough County. In the future of Hillsborough County and the future of Tampa Bay especially in the sports world We've got the Rowdies we've got a hockey team doing well the Bucks are on fire if you're not watching Hard Rocks on HBO watching the Bucks on Training Camp It is an amazing story about Jameis Winston and Coach Cutter is doing are doing for this season to gear up So and then we've all of course we've got baseball the Rays are doing great as always I don't know Um if the Rays will stay in St. Petersburg I think that the future of the the sports industry and the Tampa Bay market Is that the Rays stay in Tampa and they're gonna move to Tampa and that's my prediction but I do think they'll leave St. Petersburg Um and the last thing that I'm really excited about about Hillsborough County and our industry is just The availability to vacation here more and more people now that live here are taking advantage of advantages of our beaches And that's because more hotels are creating Clearwater Beach St. Pete Beach we were just talking about boating we were talking about outdoor experiences More people are taking the advantage of using our precious Florida uh water uh water and wildlife and it's exciting
I love it and if you do come here and use our water do not throw your trash in our water I don't like when you do that So take care of our water and then I would say probably the fourth thing that's amazing is that um about Tampa is it's the Dr. Jamie headquarters
Of course of course yes
So that does take precedence over Riverwalk and downtown
So you only get it as like one and one A
Right one and one A yeah I would say yeah for sure yeah
And when you come to visit you'll get your photo with not only Jamie but if she's not available you'll have a statue of Jamie
Right yes I love it I love it that's where we're heading and then I'll even share my he's creating a railway Down West Shore for me so I'll let you use that if you're the chosen one so
You'll get the golden ticket like this is like Wilonka
People all over the world are opening their candy bars Uh okay alright so what do you see so now we're we made everyone jealous they're all moving here in flocks right now Um but what do you see is the biggest issues facing the Tampa Bay region um in the next twen- ten to twenty years and should we be scared?
I think it's always good to be uh ahead of the game and I think one of the things we really need to be cognizant about is what is our brand? So for instance if you go to Nashville they are the music city they are a brand in themselves is a music city Everyone who knows that goes to Nashville it's a music capital of what there's a sports team there you know there's there's businesses there but they are the music city Tampa Bay we're we're the we're the culture coast right we're all about culture we're all about environment but we also are a hub For a lot of hospitality restaurants we're also a hub for a lot of great businesses Outback Steakhouse was founded here
Yeah
Hooters Corporation was founded here we have a Fortune five hundred company uh and like Tech Data or Jable across the bridge we you know We have a lot of pockets of things in the next twenty to ten to twenty years we need to figure out are we going to be Uh the next Silicon Valley and I think we can be because we have entrepreneurs moving here Starting businesses investing in our community incubators coming here and uh Jeff Vinick and what Jeff Vinick is doing uh the Latsa Lightning owner In downtown Tampa by creating headquarters creating ways for for more capital to come through That is where we're going to be headed is we're gonna be a technology hub an innovation hub But it takes all of us as business owners to appreciate and believe in it and then that becomes our brand and then when we see Is next five ten twenty years anyone who wants an idea they come here they go to our school here they use our small businesses and they stay here
I love it okay so um you kind of have answered this along the way but I just have to ask this question it's off the cuff Um Tom wrote in a question Wes what did he write in because I want to make sure verbatim we ask his question Uh I think it was Akash how are you going to make Tampa like Austin Texas I am in Texas right now is that the question?
Well Tom great question because you know the Tampa Chamber which I'm on the board of we do we go on our benchmarking trip to Austin this year So we're gonna compare ourselves to Austin
Oh nice okay
But Austin we have a direct flight from Tampa it is great with the 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 uh the college scene it is great it is a capital city So that is a little different than Tampa um it does get a lot but their session is by it's every other year Um but you've got the foodie city it is an amazing foodie city I I'm excited My girlfriend and I were just talking about all the restaurants we're gonna try while we're there but What we need to do in Tampa is what I was saying you know we need to figure out what do we want our brain to be in Austin they wanted to be they want you know their models keep Austin weird They want it to be weird so that is what I mean they've got the race car they've got a concert um they've got a race sorry or They've got a sports thing going on they've got a big conference in uh in South by Southwest they have a headquarters or hub of Southwest Airlines We need some of this
Okay
Right we're missing this so for Tom who's in Austin take notes send it to me at Patel twenty eighteen or tweet at Patel Times dot com Let me know what we need to look out for when we're there but as far as the folks in Tampa Hillsborough County what do you like about our community? What makes you tell people that this is why you chose to live here is it the schools is it the roads is it the people you hang out with? Is it the restaurants you dine at is it the bars um I think that's what Austin did well they came together they said this is our model keep Austin weird And they figured out all the eclectic things and they made it together and boom now it's one of the most popular cities in America
So I think that all you people that travel we travel to you know you go to California you go to New York you go to these smaller cities you're going to Austin Go to Patel twenty eighteen dot com and tell them like the number one best thing that you loved about the city that you went to Um and then you have fifty different ideas uh of things that we can add to Tampa and then that kind of still is the culture coast Because we're culture we're taking all the culture from all forty nine states and bringing it right here you can do it I'm just saying We're bringing a light rail down West Shore for me I think that we could uh we could easily do that um okay so I know that we're coming up on time But I do want to get to this last question here you've said time and time again that you believe you're living out the American dream Are you living out the American dream and in this day and age is that can you even have an American dream anymore?
Absolutely and it started with your quote up up before we started the show My dad was kicked out of his country when he was thirteen years old nineteen seventy two he was kicked out of Uganda And he you know so he was a refugee and we went to study in Canada and then graduate school in in America in Massachusetts My mom came to this country when she was ten years old she knew no English she spent half the day in her first couple of years Going to elementary school and then going and learning English at a church
Wow
She didn't know English she and my mom my dad met at pharmacy college they had me at twenty four and twenty six and they Opened two pharmacies during that time they opened two pharmacies they employed people and they made Both uh sold their business their pharmacies to corporate America
Yay
That is the American dream but but by now instilling their entrepreneurial values in me I'm here learning the thinking I'm doing a great job but thinking I have seven employees my parents had thirty by my age So the American dream is inspiring and motivating your next generation to take over to be better And that is why I started my business that my mom and dad did and they didn't even know the language right?
So we have no excuse
We have no excuse and then they remind me of that thanks mom and dad Uh all the time and so the American dream is is alive and well but it's also about carrying traditions down to the next generation and so for me Running for office I just think about this this is a sacrifice right the sacrifice of money time and a lifestyle And but I feel public service is a common and so how this is the American dream is that My parents are immigrants and they gave me the opportunity to choose what lifestyle I wanted to live I was able to make money I was able to hire people but now I want to get back and be a public server and that's the true American that's what America's about
Oh high five to that I love it and I think that is important in your journey when you get to the point where you can start giving back Give back and that's what you're doing um so
It doesn't have to be money people always say well I can't write a check for a campaign I said okay can you volunteer or or charity of your choice
Yes
Just give time or you have ideas
Yes remember that too I told you my story and I I know we're at time guys but um I told you my story of UT when I couldn't give anything and I was so in debt And we were living less than paycheck to paycheck and I got that can you donate I literally wrote a check for ten dollars Um and and people are giving thousands and thousands and tens of thousands and I was like this is all I can do but I did something
It means so much I had a bank where a local banker right where they said uh well do you do you laugh at people who donate less than ten dollars I said no I mean anything anything we appreciate because we know it comes from you and it comes from the heart and every dollar means something to me
Okay so uh if we want to learn more about you we want to support you we want to support this campaign we go to Patel twenty eight dot com is that right?
Patel twenty eighteen
What did I say did I say that Patel twenty eighteen?
Yes sir
Okay good good I have Patel and Patel Times okay Patel twenty eighteen dot com um is there anywhere else that we can Follow you or find out about you or do you want us to all go to Patel twenty eighteen?
So to look at my events to look at my platform Patel twenty eighteen dot com but also tweet me I'm at Patel P A T E L T I M E S Patel at Patel Times and there's no bad idea so I'm open to it and thank you for your listening to me and thank you for having me on the show and I really appreciate the fact that Jamie that you have done such a great job of click connecting people together even you know we were talking before And so when I'm a county commissioner and we are looking for naming rights for a baseball stadium I would like to name the baseball stadium after you
Oh my god how are you already alive what are we doing?
As long as you and the commissioners agree so you gotta get one of them
Oh that's right all those other people
I'm just one of them
All the Hillsborough big wigs are logging on did you really say that are you gonna name that after her? No there's no sports field gonna be named after me there's no light rail that I'm gonna get But this is the Dr. Jamie headquarters and you are lucky to be tuning in if you could leave the viewers with one last piece of advice Before we close on this Friday what would you say?
Anything is possible so don't give up and please make sure you learn why hashtag Tampa has swagger
I love it excellent okay hashtag Tampa has swagger at Patel Times Patel twenty eighteen dot com Follow this man he's making a difference happy Friday
Thank you everybody
Hey everybody thank you so much for watching the Dr. Jamie Show episode this week I really hope that you enjoyed it Do me a favor and subscribe to me on iTunes and YouTube and of course Please give me some feedback on the show looking forward to reading it